I'd like to call the order of meeting of the regular monthly meeting of Joliet Junior College Wednesday, August 12th, 2020. Uh, who's calling the roll? Is it Joan?
Hi, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Joan, do your job.
All right, Broderick.
Present.
Crowder.
Here.
Garcia Guillen.
Here.
Mahalik.
Here.
Morales. Deanna O'Connell.
Here.
Washington.
Here.
Washington.
Here.
Here.
He's here.
Okay, um, Jake, her mic isn't projecting very well, and Wanderlech.
Here.
She's not talking to me, she's.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody who came out either in person or virtually. At this time, uh, how about, uh, trustee Jake to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Absolutely, why not? Nice to meet you guys. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, do we have any public comments?
No requests to speak before the board, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Joan. Um, moving on to 1.1, business report as needed, do we have any?
No, we do not.
No business reports? Um, do we have, I didn't see any. Do we have any moment of silence?
I do not believe so.
No, no moment of silence.
All right.
Joan, Alicia Morales, trustee Morales is here.
Join the meeting.
Thank you.
Hi.
Okay, at this time, whoop, wait a minute. Recognizations of special guests, everybody that's here in virtual are always special, and thank you for booking in our meeting. Going on to 1.4, select reports.
So, what the, you want to say what the first one is or just me?
Well, 1.4.1, approval of Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation.
Okay, we actually have a reader here this evening with us, hopefully she's on the phone. Elena Murlero is a sophomore at JJC and an education major with a passion for helping others. She's planning to graduate May of 2021 and transferring to a four-year institution to obtain a bachelor's degree and then pursuing a master's degree in higher education administration. Elena is a very active student leader on campus with her involvement in many clubs and projects. She is currently the vice president of Latinos Unidos. She was also the president of the International Student Club. In addition, Elena is a peer mentor through the Office of Multicultural Student Affairs.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Hello.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So I have the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month 2020. Whereas citizens of the Hispanic ancestry comprise a significant percentage of the residents of Illinois Community College District Number 525, and whereas it is the goal of Joliet Junior College to provide its students with a comprehensive curricular and co-curricular educational experience with consideration given to the contributions of all socially identifiable groups within American history and culture, and whereas the contributions of the citizens of the Hispanic ancestry to the history and culture of the United States are invaluable and abundant. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District Number 2525, Joliet Junior College Counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook State of Illinois hereby proclaims September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in Illinois Community College District Number 525 adopted this 12th day of August 2020.
I'm moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joan, call or roll, please.
Broderick.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Garcia Guillen.
Yes.
Mahalik.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
O'Connell.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
And Wanderlech.
Yes. Next item, 1.4.2, approval of resolution honoring retiree Roy Britton. We have a motion.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Joan, call or roll, please.
Broderick.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Garcia Guillen.
Yes.
Mahalik.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
O'Connell.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
And Wanderlech.
Yes. Next item, 1.4.3, approval of resolution honoring retiree Juliette McSwine or McSweeney?
McSwine. So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Joan, call or roll, please.
Broderick.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Garcia Guillen.
Yes.
Mahalik.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
O'Connell.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
And Wanderlech.
Yes. Next item, 144, approval of resolution honoring retiree, this is even worse, Nicola Centevsky?
Centevsky. So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Joan, call or roll, please.
Broderick.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Garcia Guillen.
Aye.
Pollock.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
O'Connell.
Yes.
Wanderlech.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Uh, next item, approval of resolution honoring retiree Kathleen Sturl.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Joan, call or roll, please.
Broderick.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Garcia Guillen.
Yes.
Mahalik.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
O'Connell.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
And Wanderlech.
Yes. Next item, 1.4.6, faculty union report. Bob Marsink with us. If not, we have a written report from him. Next item, 1.4.7, adjunct faculty, faculty union report from Laurel, and we have a written report from her. And thank you very much. Um, next item, 1.5, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of June 24th, 2020.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Nancy seconded.
Trustee Garcia seconded.
Seconded. Any additions or corrections?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I believe the minutes correctly reflect my vote on the appointment of interim police chief, which passed. However, I would like to clarify that I was in support of that appointment and that our discussion on that item caused some confusion, which is why my vote does not reflect my support. I do wholeheartedly support that appointment.
So you rescind your vote?
I rescind.
And make it approval, okay.
Yes.
Any other corrections or additions? If not, Joan, call or roll, please.
Broderick.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Garcia Guillen.
Yes.
Mahalik.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
O'Connell.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
And Wanderlech.
Yes. Next item, 1.6, communications, any further communications, Ms. Turney?
No further communications, Mr. Chairman.
All righty. Next item, 1.7, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? If not, Joan, call or roll, please.
Broderick.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Garcia Guillen.
Yes.
Mahalik.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
O'Connell.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
And Wanderlech.
Yes. Next item, 1.8.1, approval of consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Uh, is this where we can pull items?
Yes, you can.
So I'd like to make a motion to pull item, um, 2.1.1?
2.1.1, okay.
And will you be reading the reports for the faculty union and the adjunct faculty union that you received? I know you said you got written reports.
Didn't we all get the copy of it?
Oh, I didn't see it in my packet.
Should be in your, on your, it was set on the table.
Oh, it was, what was here already?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anything else, anybody? If not, Joan, call or roll, do we have a motion, we have a motion and a second. Joan, call or roll.
Broderick.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Garcia Guillen.
Yes.
Mahalik.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
O'Connell.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
And Wanderlech.
Yes. Okay, next item is 2.1.1, approval of appointment of treasurer for the district.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, is this a new position or why is this, why is this necessary?
The college has to appoint a treasurer, that's required.
Always has to.
It always has to, and so Jeff, under his role, is the interim CFO that does not cover the treasurer. It's typically called out and identified. The $500 annual stipend obviously is prorated based on the length of his term.
Oh, Galick was the old treasurer.
Correct.
And he's gone, so.
Right, 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 okay, so he's assuming that as the treasurer, that, okay. Correct. Okay, thank you.
Uh, any other discussion on this item?
Nope.
If not, Joan, call or roll, please.
Broderick.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Garcia Guillen.
Yes.
Mahalik.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
O'Connell.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
And Wanderlech.
Yes. Uh, okay, goes down to item number five, student development, no action. Item number six, new and old business board comments.
Can I ask a question? Since this is board comments, Carl?
Mm-hmm.
Were we supposed to adopt a change on the, the minute approval subject to, wouldn't you?
There was no adoption of change.
Well.
You just, trustee Washington just made a comment for the record.
Okay, so it's just going to be a comment of record that goes in?
Correct.
Okay, no problem.
No, no action to be taken, correct.
Right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so moving on to item number seven, new business, we've got the first reading of 7-1, 7-2, 7-3. Under old business, we've got the second reading of 8.1 through 8.8. Approval of the third, 8.9, 8.10, 8.11, they were all in consent agenda. So moves us on to the reports, reports of the JJC Foundation. Nancy? Do we have a report? Trustee Guillen?
Uh, yes. Uh, can you hear me fine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, good afternoon. Uh, I do have a brief report, so, uh, the, um, the JJC Foundation met last month virtually, um, and I am really proud of the work that they're, that they're doing in terms of the emergency fund that was established a few weeks ago to make sure that students that need that additional assistance, either for materials or anything else, that they are receiving, um, that particular assistance, also particularly for students that do not qualify for the, um, emerg, for the funding through the CARES Act. So I am really glad that we are doing this through JJC. And, um, just wishing our students are going to be going back to school next week, uh, the best of luck in their semester, um, and feel free to reach out to any of the resources that are available to you, um, virtually, to make sure that, um, this, this school year is definitely going to be different, but at least that you are receiving the, all the support that you need during this time. That is all I have.
Thank you.
Um, is there going to be a golf outing?
Yes.
When is the golf outing for the foundation?
Friday, September 11th.
Okay, September 11th.
Mm-hmm.
Christie, do you need volunteers for it? For the golf outing?
Uh, no, we don't, um, we're keeping it very much to a minimum, um, there's two people from athletics and, and just Amanda and I. They don't want a lot of people and it's going to be run differently, but we don't, we're not looking for volunteers this year. If you, as a trustee, would like to come out and, you know, just kind of wave to people, that'd be fine, but we really aren't going to be around and getting close to any of the golfers.
What time's the golf outing to and from?
Um, it's at 10 o'clock in the morning, and it'll probably go pretty fast because of COVID, there won't be a gathering at the end, um, they'll be taking their steak sandwiches through like a box lunch kind of thing, and then the raffle will be done a different way, so, um, there'll be foursomes and, um, of course, we have a lot of good sponsors, but, um, you know, it's, it's not going to look the way it did last year because of, uh, the virus, so there's not going to be any group gathering type things.
Have you had any, are you looking for sponsors of any sort or not?
Oh, yes, they've all gone out. We have, um, over $60,000 worth of sponsors in general that sponsored all of our events, and we're very thankful for that. At the time COVID hit, we, um, we went, reached out to them and said, you know, we've, our night of stars canceled, and we just recently did our 5K, and they all stuck with us. The good thing with, um, our sponsors for the events is 100% of their money goes to scholarships for students. None of our events, we don't use the money from sponsors to run any of our events, they all, the ticket price pays for the, um, the event. So all that sponsorship money, if a company gives 5,000, all 5,000 goes to the scholarship fund. So we, we have quite a bit of sponsors and they, every single one stayed with us even though, um, we had to cancel two of the events.
Okay, and as far as scholarships, um, when do you start for the, for the, for the January scholarships? What's the date that disturb applying?
Um, the month of, October is always when we post for the spring semester, so scholarships will open up October 1st, they'll close at the end of October, and then the students will know, um, definitely before the first drop tape for spring if they receive foundation scholarships.
Got it.
Christie, did we use up all the scholarships for the fall semester or are there still funds available?
Um, we've used up all the foundation scholarships, we have four smart start scholarships available, um, and then I have the student emergency funds. Any of the students, um, are able to, um, apply for student emergency funds with, for tuition help, fees, or books, so everyone that has come forward that maybe didn't get a scholarship or wasn't funded under the CARES Act, they were able to get, I think I put tuition money on about six students comps today. So we do have funds available, not named scholarships, those were all spoken for, but we, we still have money to help students if there's a need.
Is there anything on the website that identifies what they would have to do to get that, those funds?
Um, all the students receive, um, messages from Yolanda's area, Dr. Farmer's area to apply for student emergency, are, are also, Communication Center has been sending out things, so the students are all aware. There's also, um, under COVID, uh, opportunities, financial opportunities available that they can click on, it's on the website, it's on the foundation page, and then there's also quite a few scholarships that are available, external ones, that we have the links posted on our, on our website, and some of those are still available.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, next, 9.2, ICCTA, Ms. Broderick.
Okay, first of all, I'm going to give you, and I don't know if you've all received it, but the ACCT conference that was scheduled for this year in Chicago has been canceled because of COVID. Uh, the ICCTA awards and celebration of how old we are, uh, that dinner and the awards has also been canceled, there's no, uh, future date at all that they're giving because of the situation of COVID. Um, this coming Friday and Saturday, August 14th and 15th, is the regional ICCTA meeting that I was going to physically attend, but now I'm going to Zoom attend because the attendance has gone down because of COVID. Uh, tomorrow, I have a regional Zoom meeting with all of the regions in our central region to find out what's going on, uh, regionals, and I'll bring that back at my next meeting. We did have part of the ICCTA roundtable already that we did on a Zoom, uh, last week on August 7th, and these were some of the topics that we discussed. They asked, at your college, what category of classes is most likely to be negatively affected by COVID-19? That was the vocational classes that stuck out. Over 67% of all of our community colleges are saying it's the vocational classes that are affected, and I've been, I was texting Dr. Mitchell during some of my questions that we were going back and forth and asking on. Um, they're most likely to be 139 on-campus classes, but, uh, it looks like most of the classes are going to be via the internet, it's going to be online. Um, let's see, they're doing, um, the next question was, in Illinois, COVID-19 cases have been increasing as of late. How concerned are you in your district regarding a second wave and a retreat to Phase 3 or lower before a vaccine is found? The concern is extremely high, over 75% of all the community colleges are concerned we're going to be reverting back to a Phase 3. We all keep, all of the community colleges are monitoring the COVID-19 cases as Dr. Mitchell shares with you in her emails. Uh, it encompasses many, many counties, multiple counties, and we keep abreast of all data that's going on so that all the community colleges are aware of what's going on. Presidents, you are all in direct contact of all that information that's shared with us on the ICCTA boards. Um, Kankakee County Community College already is moving back to a Phase 3 or possibly a Phase 2, um, until they find out what the vaccine's going to do, so I'm just giving you a heads up what one of the colleges said. And yes, of course, our president's our best source of information. The third question, is your district looking into layoffs or employee reductions, RIFs? Uh, right now, currently, the answer was no and likely to 42% for both. As Dr. Mitchell had shared with me, at this time, we're not doing anything yet, we're looking at the spring, so in 2021, we'll be looking at that to see what we need, because we all do know that enrollment is going to be a focus and a concern, and definitely costs are going to be a concern. She did share with me, and I don't know, Judy, if you wanted to share what you shared about the retirees and the adjuncts and all that, you know, if there's anything that we should be aware of on that end, anyone wanting to retire or?
We haven't had any, anyone announce a retirement from now through December. Um, we do have retirees that will come up in May.
Okay.
Um, what we've continued to do is, um, for those vacant positions that are held open from the previous budget year, we're continuing to hold those, and we're not filling those, other than critical like Escortina, we hired her, um, as far as the, or Escortina was actually in the fiscal year '21 budget, she was the only position that we moved forward in the current year, and the prior positions, those are all on hold, so we're just being very cautious as far as the new hires. But I can tell you though, that just so you, you know, you have that, we have, um, we were very pleased with all of our unions that agreed to sign an MOU that we were able to reallocate some of those employees whose positions might not be utilized right now, and of that, we had 34 employees that were relocated, um, to various positions, they're helping with the online chat, they're helping with the Communication Center, they're greeters at the doors, so they're helping in those much-needed positions. Um, so we never had anyone that was officially furloughed, um, we have some who, their schedules, adjunct, you know, their loads are not going to be where they're at, um, and so, however, our numbers, if we look at our numbers as compared to July 2020, payroll was at 952 as compared to 1,018 in July 2019, so we're continuing to watch our numbers, keeping those down, um, you know, as a result of the pandemic, and who knows what the hu, the future holds as far as instruction, so we'll, we'll continue to watch.
Yeah, and that's what was coming up in the discussion that we have, the ICCTA, with Dr. Mitchell shared with me, I shared with the group, and they did say that all of them are constantly looking at retirement options and not filling those positions, so that was the big overall concern, because we do know that, yes, we know there's, the pandemic's causing issues and concerns with enrollment, however, it's too, too early to decide what to do, but to hold those spots and do what we need to do with retirements. The last question that was asked was, as a trustee, or no, I should say there's one more that besides this one, as a trustee, what are your three largest concerns with students returning to campus? The major, major one with 100% was the safety of students and the college personnel. Next was the ability to offer the mix of classes student needs, and then students taking the semester off, because we're finding some are taking the semester off. And I did, in listening, and something that I was really totally blown away by, um, I guess U of I, that if the kids decide to transfer from University of Illinois to a community college, they're not going to count the community college hours, and all of the community colleges are thoroughly upset about that, and they're the only ones, they thought it was Springfield, it's, it's normal that's, that's doing it. So that alerted Jim Reed, and Jim Reed's going to be talking to U of I because he thinks that that's not something that should go forward with a pandemic, we've never had a pandemic like this, students should be able to still go to the community colleges, and it should be a positive to help reinforce the students with their gen ads that they need.
Is it just U of I?
Yeah, U of I.
Wow.
Yeah.
Relative to the country, that's only, or is, that they just throughout the whole state's doing?
That was just the U of I, out of everyone, that was just the U of I that was identified. Yeah, it's bad PR for the U of I because the community colleges that are down there are very concerned about the fact that they want to get enrollment increased, but they also want to work with U of I to make sure that those classes that they take at the community college are accepted at U of I.
They should be. They need to jump on board and be a team player.
You got it, you got it. So, um, Jim Reed is going to be dealing with that, we're leaving him in that hold. Um, then the last one was, what do you believe are the three largest challenges that your college faces in the upcoming semester? They are, one, the online class offering is difficult, frustrations of ever-changing plan of attack regarding COVID makes planning anything three to four months in advance extremely difficult, as you know, from your planning from management. We have a return to campus brochure, some of them have that, uh, that has been shared with the ICCTA, that they're shared with us on returning to campus, what that could be. Uh, students are asked to complete a self-wellness check at some of the cop, community colleges. I know we have the scanners that they have to come in and do that. We're advanced, we're farther advanced, a lot of them are just doing where they pop the thermometer in front of their forehead, and it tells you what the thermometer is, we just stand and it says, yes, green, you're approved, red, see you later. The other concern is, um, greatest needs and challenges every day, enrollment is slow, summer school is ending, and there is a rush to have the first semester ending at Thanksgiving. Have you heard that?
Um, there are some community colleges that are talking about that, um, ending their labs earlier, you know, and not coming back after Thanksgiving, um, we have been talking about that, the survey just went around, it's probably a 50-50 split right now, so I'm working with Dr. Gray and the academic team, and we'll evaluate.
Okay, and then the last thing that was the biggest concern was the cost of cleaning is extremely expensive.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we have to do it for the health of everyone, so they can't wait till election day is over. And that ends my report.
Well, thank you for that nice report. Moving on now, the next, and this is, I think, Mr. Crowder's first time here.
Physically, yes.[1720.26] Physically, yes.
Physically, yes. So, and you probably don't have anything to say, whatever you want to say, you go right ahead. Student trustee report.
Student trustee has nothing to report.
Nothing to report?
Nothing to report.
Other than you're excited to start your semester next week, right? There we go.
I was frustrated, Brodrick would have said that.
Hey, you know, one thing I forgot to add, well, you did that to me. One thing I forgot to add that I did find, and I did get the support too, in finding out with dealing, with dealing Dr. Gray and Jory. Even though we're concerned about enrollment, the only areas in all the schools that are completely filled are the nursing programs.
Yes.
You know? Outstanding, Dr. Gray. Outstanding.
So, moving on, 9.4, Bill is the grounds committee, Jake and Dan.
We won't, we won't be so brief with ours, so we got a couple of things. We voted on a couple of things tonight. The V building and the K building roofs replacements. The V building, we set a little bid for $370,000. No, no, no. We budgeted $370,000 for, for this project, and it came in at $175,000, pretty significantly down. It went with the local contractor, Crowler Roofing, and I believe there was 100, 1,000, it went out to 1,103 vendors and 10 bid on it. The second one was the K building roof replacement. We budgeted 390,000, and the bid came in at 150,000, so pretty significantly under budget again. And it was Crowler Roofing again, another local, local firm. And it went out to 1,103 vendors, and only 10 people bid on it, so. Upcoming bids for next month, we have the keyless entry. This is the various buildings, they, we rotate and we do the keyless entries throughout the, throughout several years, just to keep making sure they'll stay up. And both of those roof projects are supposed to start toward the end of August, so, so we're not going to have students here, so that shouldn't affect us too badly. Couple other things said, we replaced, a couple of projects are outstanding still. We're repairing the southeast entrance canopy in Rommelville. Metal panels finally were delivered, but the carpenter is on vacation, so we can't schedule until he gets back in town, so. And then replacing the elevators in the G building. The engineers made a site visit to determine the scope of work, and they're working with CDB for the next phase of that project. And then the B building boiler replacement is basically, is finishing up here, so that was, went pretty smoothly. The natural science epoxy floor project is complete. The B building, the J building roof replacement is, I believe it's complete, but I guess they're tying up a couple of fine, uh, fine ends at the end of the project, so. And then I already mentioned the B building and the K building roof replacement coming up in August. Guys also did have a master plan project handout in our, our handouts this month, so next month, I guess we're going to be voting on the master plan. And work day is preliminary testing now, is what I was told. I think, I believe in March 2021 is the, the goal live date, or is that just?
Or HR and finance.
Or HR and finance, so. So that's moving along pretty well. And then Carl, do you want to fill us in on the zoning for the cell towers? What was in our?
The, it wasn't a zoning issue for the cell towers, it was just an amendment. They had to relocate the easement for the line, and so it's just an adjustment to the location of the easement. So because it's an entitlement on your property, you do have to, you did have to approve it, so that's the nature of that. Just a course correction, if you will.
Sounds good. May I also say that I have the most fun committee group to be a part of too, because they're all good, they work hard, so. Thanks, everyone.
Did we have any storm damage from the storm that came through?
No, they, they said the roofs looked really good. They held up after, after, the new roofs looked really well, but I, I don't know, is there any damage to the other roofs?
Mr. Van Dine?
Try not mute.
You're, you're back on mute, buddy.
It's got a delay. No, there were no, no damage to any roofs. We had a few leaks here and there, city center and main campus. We had some branches down, but overall, we fared the storm very, very, very well.
Why, why did we have like 40 comm ed trucks in our parking lot today?
More like 100, but we have a-
It was a bunch. It was a bunch.
Yeah, we have a memorandum of understanding with Commonwealth Edison where they ask us if they can utilize some of our parking lots for staging areas when they have these large outages across Illinois. And so they call in a lot of different electrical companies from downstate and all over to come up and help. And so they need a large space to stage with their transformers, their poles, just their trucks and equipment. And then they, they stay at the hotels, and then the next day, they go back out and keep going, trying to get Dr. Mitchell's power back on.
Well, it was not only Dr. Mitchell, it was trustee Brodrick too, and a lot of New Lennox and Joliet.
May I have your attention, please?
This is an addition.
Everyone is required to check in at a designated hands-free temperature station as you enter the building. While on campus, we ask that you maintain social distancing of six feet. Wash your hands frequently and use hand sanitizer. Cover your nose and mouth when sneezing or coughing, and avoid touching your face. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Jake for your report. And I want to thank the Bill is the grounds committee, and Pat Van Dine and Janice Ritas, for all your guys that you, they budgeted way too much money for these roofs, and it came in way under, so that's, 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 that's good. It's always nice to hear.
It is nice to hear.
We will move on to the president's report. Dr. Mitchell.
Okay, so I have a little bit, before I start, today we had our general session, which was not traditional. We held it via Zoom, and, and it went very well. We, I have a Zoom account that hosts up to 1,000 employees, so we can host our open forums and things like that. But we kicked off our general session today with a brief video, and I'd like to share that with you, and hope you find it as inspirational as we all did as well.
Arriving to Carrigan with music?
No.
Today, we heard a dire warning. The CDC said what's happening now in the US could turn out to be as serious as what we're seeing overseas.
If there was a definition for love and family and friendship and the phrase, "We are going to get through this together," it's JJC.
We've been able to provide our services by, you know, giving an opportunity for students to still have those types of interactions with us. They just look a little different.
Technology has definitely been the key.
I mean, we couldn't be where we are today if it weren't for ICE. We're, we're never going to go back to the way it was, and we don't want to. We've met their needs, and we've opened horizons for them that we didn't, we couldn't offer before.
That's the part that kind of made me proud, just watching everyone do that extra bit so that no one could be left behind.
I think that's one thing that, that helped me the most, was collaborating with my colleagues in the department to help pull this off.
Hello, my name is Jason Howland. I teach principles of biology for nursing and vet tech majors, and welcome to my kitchen classroom.
The pandemic may have changed some of the methods we use to reach our students, but it has not changed the quality of the programming and services we provide.
I hope that the takeaway for our employees is that in the future, when things are back to normal, that maybe you can get through some of these challenges a little easier, and we can accomplish things we, we thought we couldn't.
We became aware that Physicians Immediate Care, which is across the street here on Hobalt, was conducting COVID testing. So a few of us within the department came up with the idea of buying lunch for them.
We've created over 3,000 of each so far and distributed them. I was working eight hours a day for about the first month, just to get the need met.
It's just our privilege to be a part of something like this, and we look forward to being able to do more in the future.
I know that our club communities have worked very hard during this time to make every student feel important and make sure that everybody knows they're not alone.
They were also offering Chromebooks to students who didn't have computers or had, you know, outdated computers. And a lot of the student activities, such as the clubs, have been meeting online.
The staff is deeply aware of the role that they play in the college being able to successfully and safely open again. And I really hope that our fellow employees truly understand how fortunate we are to have such a dedicated team of professionals that are here to support them.
Well, we're all in this together, and we're going to help each other through this. Students and employees alike, we're all JJC wolves.
We all need to be patient with each other and support each other. We need to be brave and take risks. We cannot continue business as usual. This is new terrain for all of us, and we need to think differently.
There's a lot of uncertainties, but the one certainty, the one guarantee, is that JJC is going to be there with you every step of the way, making sure that you get everything that you need.
I don't know about you, but it brings a tear to my eye when I watch that, and I cannot tell you enough how appreciative I am to the faculty and staff of this community college. Their sheer dedication and their commitment 24/7 at times. When we kicked over in March to this new environment, the, the commitment, the texts, the emails, the work that has been done throughout the summer has just been phenomenal, and I cannot thank them enough. So that was how I'd like to begin. With that, I'd like to continue just sharing with, trustee Brodrick talked about, you know, the return to campus. And we've had many decisions, difficult decisions to make, and some institutions are doing the self-monitoring. However, we felt that it was more advantageous to, to have a different outlook for our employees and our students, to have that PPE and that entrance at our front door look completely different. So everyone who enters our campus has their temperature taken. We have masks, we have hand sanitizer, we have, we provide face shields when necessary, and then we have social distancing. We have our greeters that are monitoring our students. And so I'm, I'm just, again, so proud of the work that we're doing, again, keeping everyone's health and safety first and foremost. As we kick in to the, you know, to the coming months, we'll continue to monitor. Trustee Brodrick, again, we continue to hear the proposed setback to a Phase 3. So the actions that we have taken, even rolling out and opening up our buildings on August 3rd, have been very proactive in nature. We have taken into consideration all of our health, you know, the health of our employees. Those of it had, you know, needs as far as their, you know, their family and taking care of their family. They're working very closely with HR to see what we can do as far as placement. The goal is to have no more than 50% of employees on campus in any one department. Given the size in our million square feet of buildings, it's important for our students when they enter to see someone in those, in those areas. So we're just being very cautious. And within the labs, we are scheduling and not to exceed 10 in a lab, so it's going to require the separation of. And the reason for that, the primary reason is, if we roll back to Phase 3, what the understanding will be, is that our employees will be shifted back home. However, we can run the labs if we cannot open up with simulation labs. We can run them, keeping them with that 10 and under in mind. So we, we thought it's better to be proactive and schedule accordingly, and if we have to revert back, we're ready to go. And then we'll assess spring semester over, probably over the next couple of weeks. I'll, I'll share with the board my recommendation. But the thought is always to prepare for, and I don't want to say plan for the worst, but if even January, you're looking at spring, we're probably looking at the best, going back to a Phase 4, and, you know, before we can even anticipate the Phase 5 and a vaccination. So the thought right now is that spring will mirror very much what fall looks like. We want to make sure that we get that out so faculty can prepare again, share that message with our students. But once we formalize that decision, again, waiting to talk to presidents, we've had our meetings as well, I'll be sure to share that with you, but that decision will be coming very soon. Due to the work that we've done, the summer semester, we were actually up 7%, which was significant for the summer semester. Fall is looking a little different, much like you said, our fall enrollment. If you recall, in May, I reported we had a 40% reduction in our enrollment, and now we're down about 18%. Still significant, but significant movement of a 22% increase in our student enrollment. What you have before you tonight, I made sure that everyone had a copy of the fall enrollment initiatives that, that has been spearheaded and pulled together by Dean Bob Morris. It talks about the initiatives within student development, it talks about the initiatives within career services, within our marketing and communications division, which is very extensive. In addition to what the student development team is, we have our faculty that have stepped up. They're calling students from spring courses who are expected to register for fall and have not. They're hosting programs and hosting virtual information centers for our students. They've been advisors, very busy with virtual advising sessions. And all students are, again, notified of actions for improvement on the online course, now that we've had time to prepare and build with, with simulation labs. So, so we're looking forward to a successful start on August 17th. Again, sharing with our students that we have flex starts date, flex start dates of August 31st, September 14th, and August and October 12th. What we continue to hear is just the hesitation with students. One, the COVID. Number two, there are so many students and parents who are unemployed, you know, and so they're, you know, taking, there, some of them are thinking about taking that extra year just to rebuild, and so we continue to support them any way that we can. I know Christie talked a little bit about, some about the, the foundation scholarships, but we continue to advertise and market the CARES Act funding for our students. We have the Student Merit Scholarship, and we have the new release of funding, again, falling under the umbrella of the CARES Act, which is the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. So we're working on that budget to finalize, and this new, this new funding actually provides expanded support for college tuition for underrepresented students. So the college is in the process of finalizing the application for this opportunity, and we'll share those details with our students as soon as possible. Let me see what I have. So now I want to switch to some really exciting news. I mean, we need exciting news. So what I wanted to let you know is that we received a call from Congressman Lauren Underwood this morning congratulating JJC on receiving the Student Support Services Grant from the United States Department of Education. The Trio Student Services Support Grant is a $2,252,000 five-year grant, the second largest award in the state of Illinois. We received a perfect score of 125 on the application, which speaks so loudly, again, to our employees, the grant writers, DeAndre, his team. Over 35 years, JJC's Trio Support, Support Program has provided services to low-income students, first-generation college students, and disabled students enrolled in post-secondary education. The goal of the grant is to increase college retention and graduation rates of participants and help students to make the transition from one level of higher education to the next. So that's extremely exciting news. And then we also heard from the Illinois Community College Board, we received the Adult Education Grant of $1.8 million, the third-largest adult ed award in Illinois. The instructional activities will include adult basic education for 0th through 8th grade, adult secondary education, 9th through 12, English as a Second Language, Career Exploration and Awareness, Integrated English Literacy and Civics Education, Bridge Programs, and so much more. I want to, again, thank our amazing grant writers, DeAndre Butler and his team, Amy Murphy, Michelle Smith and their teams. Again, the phenomenal work of our employees just continues. And then more good news, what you heard a little bit about that. We received a call, and a congratulatory call from legislators Walsh Jr. and McGuire, in addition to our lobbyist Julie Currie. The state released our $19.8 million for the city center project. Super excited, woo-hoo! This has been a long time coming. So I am now working with Jeff Heap on strategies for future use, with suggestions to be presented to the board later in this semester. So I shared with our employees this morning, please remember, we will continue to achieve, and we will continue to thrive. It may look a little different this year, but I'm confident in our employees and our commitment to Joliet Junior College. And one quick ending, wishing trustee Betty Washington a very happy belated birthday, and due to the power outage, your cake will be delivered to you once the bakery reopens. That concludes my report.
Will we be able to look at any possibilities of tuition reduction with all of those great news factors that you've?
Jeff and I have been talking quite a bit, so.
Okay, I'm throwing that out as a thought from a trustee position.
We're looking at tuition, we're looking at potential bonds, debt reduction, projects that we're holding off on. So he and I meet, and, you know, and again, it's, you know, everything signed and fixed. It was really funny, our lobbyist Julie Currie and Brent, they texted me pictures of the signed documents to say, this is it. In fact, it was really funny, our lobbyist Julie Currie and Brent, they texted me pictures of the signed documents to say, this is it. And so I'm assuming the check's in the mail, once we get there.
So we get it, it's not.
So, but we will plan and we'll come back to the board and we'll share those options with you.
Good, because we did take some extensions and do some revisions to our bonds. And I know that we did them for shorter terms, but we did it due to the, you know, financial situation we were in. So I would definitely hope that you and Jeff are looking at that.
Absolutely. The 2013 bonds are callable, I believe, in 2023. So we'll look at that. We're going to look at some of the, you know, student tuition or some of those capital fees. We're looking at our projects and we want to be very proactive. And so we're going to, we will work on all of that and come back to you with, with some options. So, thank you very much.
And great news from the grant writers.
Oh, I know.
Does Christie's group have grant writers too? Because I thought-
The grant writers are within Christie's division, yes.
Oh, good job, Christie.
Yvette Johnson and Kate Coghlan. They are amazing individuals. They keep me on my toes with, with signatures, whether they're DocuSign or whether I'm here. And again, I, I cannot just tell you enough how proud I am of my team, my leadership team, the campus community, the employees, the faculty and staff are, have just been amazing. I mean, truly stepping up and going above and beyond despite everything that we've been, you know, all of us are going through since 2020. And then the power outage and internet outage. I mean, I typically don't like to rush time, but I cannot wait till 2020 is over.
Well, I think, I think we're all at that point. The 2020 needs to be over. How are we doing with administrative, the, your, your team?
Search process. So for the VP of Academic Affairs, we will be moving to the third round of open forum and interviews with the smaller groups in the next coming weeks. We have three finalists moving forward. The VP for Finance and Administration, we did not have as many apply. We had shortlisted, there were two individuals that were shortlisted to come forward. However, one withdrew and received, and accepted a position at another institution. And so we just, we decided it was in the best interest to reopen that position and reevaluate. So we'll have a little bit of delay there. The Chief Human Resources Officer, they are going through round two with the face-to-face. So we have an audio interview is the first one. The second round is the teams, the face, face-to-face interview. And then once I hear back from them, hopefully we'll have the shortlisted group that will come forward. The Chief of Police Position, we did hear from GovHR. We received their top recommendation of, I think it's eight to nine applicants, or it might be a little bit more. The notebook's in my office. We will look at those now and, and assess those to see if they agree with what we're looking at for the college. And then once we can identify, and again, shortlist the top two to four candidates, depending how that is, we will expand those interviews as well. What we're doing right now, despite the COVID, is that Michael Fitzpatrick and HR is reaching out to the campus community to gather questions from all of the employees. And then when we have the Zoom meeting, the facilitator will ask those questions and then everyone can listen to those answers. They'll fill out their responses. And ultimately, all those responses and the feedback from the entire campus community will be shared with me. For our students with the Chief of Police, I'm really pleased to share that Dr. Amy Sims will be facilitating that group. We've had students that have reached out that are very interested in serving on that committee as well. So we are reaching out to the students, gathering their questions, and we will have Dr. Sims, and I believe it's three or four students, that will ask those questions to the candidate. And then the, the student body will be able to watch that and again, submit their responses as well. So what I shared with everyone in, in the general session today is that I'm going to take all, you know, look at all of the, all of the comments that come, very comprehensive overview on all the applicants, because each four of these positions are critical to the institution.
And did we have, I mean, I had heard that we had like over 100 people apply for the police chief. Is that true or not true?
Uh, I think it was like in the 90-ish range. Same for the VP of Academic Affairs. It was really high.
That's what I heard, the numbers were high.
The VP of Finance, I want to say it was under 30. It was really low. But that's typical there. There was actually an article that came out today that I was reading, that it's a tough position right now. And there's, there's competition out there, unfortunately. And, you know, which, you know, gives those, you know, those candidates another opportunity. But, and then, you know, there's a delay in your time, just because now everything is, just takes a little bit more time in a virtual world. So, so we're moving forward. The, the chairs of each committee keep me apprised every week, and so I'm pleased with the work they're doing and-
Do you have a goal date at all?
Well, the VP of Academic Affairs, depending on the timeline, we could have a special meeting before the workshop if we're ready. And we can appoint that. If not, it would be September 9th. The VP of Finance probably will go to October at this point. HR, maybe September 9th. We're hoping to make that. And the Chief of Police, I don't know if we'll make it, because we really want to get the students. I don't know if we'll make the workshop a special meeting, but by September 9th.
Thank you.
Done?
Yes, thank you.
Chairman's report. Again, I want to thank the president and her cabinet for doing all the great work that they've done. I also want to give kudos to Kelly and, and Mike Hernandez and the marketing. I was up in Wisconsin last week with former trustee Mike O'Connell. And he says, hey, I heard your enrollment's going up because people are going back to JJC. Because if they're paying thousands and thousands of dollars to go someplace else and they can only be online anyway, why not come back to JJC and be online? And the marketing they have on WJOL, I hear them all the time. Hey, here it is. Come to JJC, you're going to be better, cheaper, everything works. So, kudos to them.
I think we need to put Scott Slocum on our payroll. He's been really promoting JJC. He's doing a great job.
He is.
So thank you, Scott.
Okay.
Yes, he's done it.
Maybe I'll send him a sandwich. Okay.
I sent him something else. Moving on, we need to go into executive session for 2C2 and 2C5. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'm moved.
Motion second. Is Joan still here?
Yep.
Joan, can you call a roll, please?
Maybe?
Joan?
Joan?
You did.
I'm Broderick.
Hi.
Crowder?
Hi.
Garcia Guillen? Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Wanderlech?
Yes.